Welcome, everyone. I'm going to try this again. Okay, that sounds good. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this work session, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can I get roll call, please?
Mayor Daggett? Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Pardon me, I didn't hear you say my name.
Sorry about that, Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House? Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Thank you. We are on to the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Matthews?
Please stand if you're able.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will ever forever call this place as home.
Thank you. We are down to open call to the public. Open call to the public enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments relating to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that the item is discussed. Open call to the public appears on the agenda twice, at the beginning and at the end. If you wish to address the council in person at today's meeting, please complete a comment card and submit it to the recording clerk as soon as possible. And I do have one comment from Tom Pearson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sweet, Mayor Daggett, council members, for this opportunity to speak to you today. As you recall, last Thursday, you approved the draft regional plan 2045. A core priority of the plan is climate action. The United Nations Environmental Program, UNAP, defines climate action as having two components. First, carbon neutrality, and second, climate adaptation. Flagstaff has long recognized three top climate adaptation priorities: wildfire, flooding, and drought. Although we have a carbon neutrality plan, we do not have a comprehensive climate action plan that includes climate adaptation. Although climate action is now a core priority, we currently have no plan. Citizens, excuse me, citizens will vote on the regional plan in May next year. That gives us plenty of time to provide and distribute a comprehensive plan that details precisely how Flagstaff will meet the challenges of wildfire, flooding, and drought. I urge you to act immediately to begin preparing our climate action plan and place it before the voters so they can fully be informed before the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We are down to the review of draft agenda for October 21st, 2025. I'm hoping everyone got a chance to take a look. Any questions or comments from council? Not seeing any online, so we are down to the city manager report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good afternoon, council. The report this time is fairly brief. Couple of quick updates with our fire department, but we wanted to save time for some presentations to you today. And starting that off, we'll be Sarah Langley talking to you about some statewide lobbying topics, and then that'll be followed by updates from both human resources and risk management and sustainability. Sarah?
Thank you, Greg, and good afternoon, mayor and council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. We also have Brian Murray and Bernice Bautista online from our state lobbying team in case there are any questions. So, as you know, the state legislative session starts in January of the new year, and we have been busy getting prepared for that. So, we wanted to get in front of you today so that we can already start laying the groundwork for some requests that we have to be as successful as possible once the session starts. And to clarify, this conversation tonight is in addition to our legislative priorities discussion, which is scheduled for later December and will be a broader conversation. So, let me go ahead and share one of these slides. Looks like it got closed. Okay. So, these requests represent areas where we anticipate opportunities this legislative session to make progress or to see movement. We know that funding will be very tight at the federal, or sorry, the state legislature this year, so we have identified some funding requests as well as several policy requests to put forward. So, for policy requests, we would like to pursue the creation of some sort of state tax credit program to provide an incentive for homeowners to perform home hardening activities on their home, which decreases the risk of wildfires to properties in town. We would also like to explore how to simplify the process of annexing city-owned facilities that are outside of city boundaries but are adjacent to a city limit. I believe we have a fire station that could benefit from this, and it sounds like there are several cities across the state who would join us in pursuing this. And then, of course, we will stay very vigilant this year for any bills that are introduced related to helium drilling or removing the Aqua for Protection permit program. We did see several bills to that effect last year, so we will be on the lookout. Under funding requests, going back to the home hardening topic, we would also like to pursue a direct appropriation so that the city could use that funding to help homeowners who are in areas that we've identified are high-risk pathways, which would bring fire into the city. So, focusing on those properties could help the entire city. We would also like to advocate for the reinstatement of Lytec funding, which was unfortunately cut in last year's state budget. And then, we also think there's an opportunity to lobby for a small amount of money from the Arizona Heritage Fund to help preservation efforts for the May Hicks House. There are also requests that you've probably already heard of that are being put forward by our community partners, such as Metro Plan and Coconino County. So, we plan to support these requests as they would have direct benefit to our residents. Metro Plan is putting forward a request for 18 million for the West Route 66 corridor improvements project. I believe we've talked about that previously, and we heard that Senator Rogers will be introducing that bill. There's also a request for 8 million for the US 180 corridor improvements. That will appear in the ARTAC bill, the Regional Transportation Advisory Council. And then, lastly, we have a need from Coconino County for support for the justice system here in town and potentially some new services or facilities related to that. So, these are areas where, with your approval, we'd like to begin advocacy and education with our state lawmakers. And then, we will be back in front of you, as I said, in late December, to have a broader conversation about both your state and federal legislative priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? It's not popping up. Mayor, comment?
Hi, thank you. Sarah, I'm wondering about adding the short-term rental resolution that was passed by the league at the annual conference. I don't know what their plans are for talking to legislators about it.
Thanks, mayor. Yeah, I know that's something the league is already focused on for next year, so we can anticipate another effort from them. Brian, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts on that topic? Brian, looks like you're muted if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with what this iteration is. My understanding, though, is that there was a deal that was passed about three years ago where I think Sedona maybe took the lead and worked with some of the short-term rental companies to come up with essentially a legislative moratorium. That period is now ended, and so that's why cities are, again, looking at other opportunities. But I do think there's an ongoing stakeholder process to, again, try and give some certainty to property owners and to their neighbors. And so, I think that's kind of an ongoing conversation. Beyond that, I don't have a lot of detail. However, I'm happy to take a look and get more information for you.
Sarah, can I jump in? Just to jump in, I was, Brian, just a clarification. I was with Sedona during that time, and it was actually an agreement that the league made with the short-term rental companies. Sedona was very much opposed to that moratorium.
I stand corrected. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Mayor, another comment?
Yeah. Sarah, can you send Brian the resolution that the league passed?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, Vice Mayor, we have Human Resources Risk Management giving an update. I think Ryan Saxby is going to head that off with his team behind him. Thank
All right. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a update to you on HR and risk management. The last time we updated was March of this year, and so happy to be able to do this again. I first want to start with thanking the HR and risk management team for their input this week to help put this presentation together. As you know, I'm new, and so we all scrambled together to put together the information that we are here to share. So, today I'd like to go through our HRRM team, introduce you to some new members, the remodel of the space, some recruitment statistics that we've traditionally reported to you, some information on employee compensation, employee learning and development, and then Erin Kaminsky behind me is going to provide our update on risk management. He's our risk manager. So, our team is made up of 15 FTEs. We currently have one vacancy in HR Generalist. It's currently posted, so if you have any friends that want to come work in HR, point them our way. Our new employees since March of 2025 are, of course, myself, Erin Kaminsky, who you'll meet momentarily, our risk manager, Emily Carter, she's an HR analyst overseeing our benefits and works with NAPEPT. Courtney Smith is our HR analyst responsible for organizational development and training, and Drake Sauer is our HR Generalist. Currently, he's assigned to the class and comp supporting Sarah Sorn. So, our HR team and remodel, we just recently in August decided to create a new logo. So, it's here on bottom left of the screen, our HR and risk management logo that you'll start to see circulated on memos and things that our team produces. On the top right is a picture of our HR team getting ready to put up the ceilings and walls. Just kidding, that was facilities, and we appreciate the team, all the work that facilities put into this, in particular Jen Brown. Want to call her out specifically. So, if you haven't been able to come by just outside here at the lobby, we are doing a pop-on-by open house. That's on October 28th from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and we are going to have popcorn available, hence the name. Thank you. So, the new digs are here in the bottom right. Really nice space, open, nice natural light and windows. Team is super excited and very thankful to the city for putting money into the HR space and risk management space. So, recruitment data, our current vacancy rate citywide remains pretty flat. Some historical figures are in the bottom bullet, but on the whole, we stay around the 10% to 13% vacancy rate, and that's right where we are today. Right now, we have 20 postings currently online. It's possible, that number changes by the minute and moment, so it's possible it's up or down by one or two, but as of Friday, it was at 20. We have 15 requisitions in queue, which means that a hiring manager has submitted a request to fill a position, and our team is working through that. Our one vacancy is in our recruiting area, so we, it's a team of three that currently is being, we have two currently in there. Our applications, total applications received citywide from January 1st to October 10th, that same time period this year versus last year, is up just over 1%. So, that's good news for us. On our average time to hire, which is the date we post a position to go live on our applicant tracking system, what you see on the city jobs page, to an employee's new hire start date is at 77 days. Overall, in the last year, it is trending down, although there are blips where it does go up and down a little bit. Full disclosure here, I am asking the team to look at maybe a different way to measure this because once we make an offer to a candidate, we don't always control the timeline by which they start because they have to give notice, there's backgrounds and things like that. So, it might be more appropriate to be reporting at least, you know, day that we post until the day that we actually make an offer. But more to come in that regard. We also continue to do marketing and outreach opportunities. I had the pleasure of attending a walk-in Wednesday event put on by our recruiting team last month. It was at the library. We had a bunch of the library staff with HR staff do marketing and invite folks to come in, learn about the various library jobs, some that are difficult to fill, and get an opportunity to tour the library. So, that was really cool. We continue to do that from time to time. And of course, we participate in job fairs. So, this is a collage of different divisions within the city participating in some of the job fairs that HR has been present for. Regarding our compensation update, our goal is to review 25% of our classifications each year over a four-year period. Do you want me to wait?
Sorry.
Oh, you're okay? Good? All right. No problem. So, this year, end of the last fiscal year, and actually touch into this fiscal year, we completed our four-year market review. So, we're working with our class and comp advisory team to kind of help set the standard in what our philosophy and what our plan will be for employee compensation for the next four years. We'd like to see a long-term four-year commitment investment in how we're going to review job classifications against market. So, that work is ongoing. Will be part of the budget process as we approach that. This year, cities invested $4 million in market adjustments, and these market adjustments have had a positive impact on many classifications across the city, but some very difficult to fill positions, at least traditionally, have been police officers, water service operators, equipment operators, and project engineers. And we've seen many of those vacancies get filled in those four classifications in particular. I introduced you to Courtney Smith a bit ago. She's brand-new to the city, started the same day that I did. We're fortunate to have an in-house training individual and organizational development individual. It shows a great investment, you know, in the city workforce. Some of, she has, well, she's a spark plug, you should meet her. But at any rate, she has some really big, good ideas, and some of those include tailoring new, we have a new employee orientation already, but she's working with divisions to help develop division-specific orientations that will supplement our new hire orientation. She's setting up a Google classroom, so our temporary employees don't get city email addresses and therefore don't have access to our NeoGov learning management system like the rest of the city workforce. And so, our temporary staff, which predominantly live in PROs and in the library, don't have the same level of access to learning and trainings. And so, Courtney has taken, taken upon herself to set up a Google classroom, which is completely free, and create training material that PROs can use in particular to, you know, upscale and train their temporary staff. She's also working on special training sessions that, you know, occur monthly, succession planning, organizational development, just as things, divisions reach out and may have needs. She'll help fill that gap. We're working on an idea for a manager academy and a supervisor, like, core training plan coming up next year. She also would like to do a mentorship program, which I'm in full support of here at the city, and get that off the ground. And then, she's working on what we're calling a flag learning lounge calendar. What this is, is it's a place where divisions can populate trainings that are available to anyone in the city to come to. CPR has been one that's thrown out there as a common example, and she'll maintain, and HR will maintain the calendar so that city employees can go on to this calendar, take a look at what trainings may be out there that are available to all and attend if they would like. And with that, I will turn it over to Erin. I won't be far in event that you have questions, but Erin's going to provide the update for us on risk management. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Unfortunately, I have to talk about the losses to the city, which is an important thing to look at so that we can reduce them. The most important resource, of course, is people, and unfortunately, that is our highest lost category. So, what I've done is I've compared January through September of last year to January of, September of this year. Some of the dollar amounts aren't in yet. If we had an accident, let's say last month, by the time we repair the vehicle and get it fixed, then the numbers will catch up. So, I've also compared the number of incidents. If we can reduce the number of incidents, we'll reduce the dollar costs. So, you can see from the trend here, the dollars are down on every category, but again, that's not representative until we get the final cost in. The bigger thing I look at is the cost per incident. So, I've divided like an auto claim, and the average auto claim costs the city about $1,500. The average worker comp claim costs the city about $2,800. So, if we can reduce one claim, 10 claims, you can see how that would add up quickly. If you look at property losses in 2024, it's $300,000. One of those losses cost $100,000 when we struck an airplane wing while we were plowing. And so, if we can reduce even one loss, we could reduce that by, you know, a third almost. So, that's part of it. Then, the claims frequency is the other thing. So, again, every category is down except for workers' comp. You can see the number of incidents in 2024 versus the number of incidents in 2025, and we've got workers' comp on there, general liability, auto, property, and again, downward trend in everything except for workers' comp. Some of the things we've been working on, we processed a renewal for our premium, and that includes doing surveys from different departments for what our assets are and what our liabilities are. We also do inspections to see how the facilities are holding up for, to preempt any OSHA inspection that may come. And we had an airport inspection and a library inspection. We're also starting a monthly safety series, same kind of training. We're getting on the same calendar with Courtney, but we're focusing on topics like hearing protection, winter driving, slip trips and falls, ergonomics, heat stress in the summer, all these things that can help employees learn what some of the risks are and avoid them. We created a share spreadsheet with Fleet to track our automobile losses so that we know exactly where it is. When an automobile is damaged, there's insurance involved, there's quotes out for repairs and estimates, there's the department as well. So, we've got a system now that helps track that through. And then, our workers' compensation, we used to send all of our workers to Vera Whole Health, which is no longer treating employees for worker comp injuries, and so we transitioned that to next care, urgent care. And if you've got any questions for Ryan and I, we're available.
We do have a question from councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. Both of you can stay standing. Erin, first of all, since you just finished, thank you so much for that information. I, maybe I've seen it in the past, but I haven't, but that's really helpful. I'm wondering- I'm wondering if the worker comp claims, I'm assuming when you talked about some of the training, safety training that we're going to put on, they kind of cover what we've seen in the past as far as claim. Correct?
Yeah, so the big claims for workers' comp in 2024 were vehicle accidents and then injuries as a result of that accident. We had a slip, trip and fall, you know, and we had altercations where police are taking down suspects. And so those are some of them, but yes, a lot of the training kind of mirrors that. And then in 2025, the big claims were slip, trip and fall, trainee that twisted their knee, somebody that had a deep cut, and then again, vehicle accidents. So we've got defensive driving as part of that training opportunity and then lifting and pulling, so all geared towards reducing those types of injuries.
Thank you for that because again, those, a lot of, a lot of times, those incidences cannot be totally avoided, but it's, you know, to be proactive and doing the training is really helpful, so. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And Ryan, I just wanted to comment, thank you on the new hire with the, I think you said she was under maybe recruiting, but the one who's kind of doing some programs. I think it'll be a great asset for the city to have some additional management training and leadership training and stuff. That's always been forefront of my career is just that ongoing support and information. And I think that'll just really help our city stay elevated. So thank you so much for incorporating that.
Thank you.
We also have a question from Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's a comment, not a question. I just want to give a shout-out of thanks to both risk management and facilities management for these protective railings that were put up about three or four months ago. We did not wait until we had a trip and fall off of these steps in front of the dais. Instead, protective railings were put up and I think this is a good example of how our city is proactive in trying to reduce the risks of accidents. So I thank you and thank you. Thanks to Scott Orton's team, which did the installation.
Thank you for that comment. Any others? Thank you for the information.
Thank you both. And we will conclude with an update from sustainability.
Hi. Good afternoon, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I'm excited to be here to provide some highlights of our work over the last six months. I am joined by Sonoma Boynton, a supervisor in the Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Section, who is stepping in for Stephen Thompson, who was on a well-deserved vacation, and of course Jenny Nieman, our Climate Section Director. Our agenda this afternoon provides just a division overview and we'll be sharing this every time we come back to council, as well as updates from our two sections. So starting off with our vision, the Sustainability Division is here to help create a livable and low-impact community where all residents can thrive. This involves working on consumption, energy, energy efficiency, litter, food access and more. We work across the municipal organization, across neighborhoods and with our many regional partners. And at the end of the day, our work is for the Flagstaff community. Engaging with our community is critical for all of our work. We connect with residents as much as possible in numerous ways. We offer a wide range of activities for folks to get involved with, from removing debris from critical watersheds or attending workshops on preparing for emergencies. Over the last six months, we've engaged with more than 7,300 people and hosted more than 500 activities. We stay actively engaged with our community through social media. Usually, our most popular posts are when we are providing action-oriented resources. However, on this particular day, National Mascot Day, this post became an instant favorite. I want to thank our friends over in Public Affairs for assisting us with that. But as you can see here, we like to have fun, too. We have just over 7,600 Facebook followers and over the last six months, 325,000 page impressions and about 2,800 Instagram followers with over 101,000 post impressions, all since Apparently, we're going to watch this again. We recently completed an overhaul to our newsletter, which has nearly doubled our opens. So we have about 1,700 subscribers now and are striving to continue to get more so we can continue to educate community members on resources as well as events for empowerment. We also host radio ads and always accept invitations to be a guest on a radio show. So thank you to Councilmember Aslan for the invitation, pictured here with Jacob Rocks, for the invitation to speak on the Energy Upgrades for Healthy Homes program. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that later in the presentation. Now moving towards administration, I want to highlight our work to promote a culture of connectivity. We challenge the Sustainability Team to stay professionally relevant so we can deliver the best services possible. Complementing this was our Resiliency Retreat hosted in August, which focused on equipping the team with tools for long-term wellbeing as well as fostering a rejuvenating workspace that we share with our team members throughout the city. And I have a spoiler alert, this weekend, we will be receiving from Green Living Magazine, Best of Arizona Award for the Best Sustainable City in Arizona. And I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor, who has graciously agreed to go down to Phoenix to accept the award on behalf of the city. So thank you, Vice Mayor. Keeping up with the fun information, we've made some fantastic headway on our facility. Want to thank PROs, Parks Recreation, Open Space and Events for collaboration to expand the landscaping services throughout the undeveloped park. And you can see here in the top right-hand corner of the image was an employee volunteer, excuse me, volunteer weed pole. And we extracted almost 400 pounds of invasive weeds just from the area around our building. We've also made significant upgrades to the facility to ensure that we are ADA compliant. We now have a, an electric front door, ADA compliant bathrooms, as well as parking striping and signage. And now focusing on the energy efficiency upgrades, really excited to say, and you can see in this picture on the lower right-hand corner, we have new windows. We now can close our windows. We are excited to have Energy Star highly efficient windows. And we have also installed electric heat pumps and now our facility is 100% electric. Jenny Nieman will speak a little bit more on those heat pumps and our funding source. We've added insulation into our attic, we've installed smart thermostats and we have tankless water heaters. So we are proud to be able to walk the talk at our city facility and welcome anyone to come visit and look at the technology and the opportunities for retrofitting existing buildings. We have some personnel updates. I'm thrilled to introduce our new Community Services Coordinator, Blake Commisio. This is a new position within Sustainability and partially funded by Economic Vitality. We are focusing on all the potential in our community to increase volunteerism, to do things such as litter removal, stream steward events and education on the value of litter prevention. We've also had two turnovers in the last six months and thanks to our friends in Human Resources, we had a very effective and exped, efficient hiring process to replace those two positions. I'm thrilled to introduce Diane Bridger, who is our new Engagement Specialist in the Climate Team, and Sierra Frieden-Lun, who is our new Food Systems Coordinator in Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Services. So you will be seeing them in the future and I am going to now hand off the presentation? Oh, I am not. I'm going to keep talking about priority-based budgeting. One thing that we do like to emphasize is that our work hits every key community priority throughout the organization and the community. And as you can see here, we hit a number of objectives within each of those priorities, from key, high-performing governance, all the way to inclusive and engaged community, to livable communities. Now, I'm going to hand the presentation off to Sonoma Boynton.
Thank you, Nicole. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and community members attending online and in person. My name is Sonoma Boynton and I am a supervisor for the City of Flagstaff Sustainability Office and I'm going to give a brief overview for the Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Section. This section works to provide the community with volunteer opportunities, signature events, education and outreach for topics like food systems, stewardship, waste prevention and our centralized volunteer program. So starting off with community stewards, we've had an amazing past six months. We have worked with over 500 volunteers on stewardship opportunities through our adoptive programs and one-time cleanups. Oh, thank you. To help provide stewardship opportunities throughout the greater Flagstaff area. For Neighborhood and Engagement, we had a cleanup for the Mobile Haven neighborhood. This cleanup was in massive thanks to the Parks and Rec and Open Space and Events and Arizona Conservation Corps and the Mobile Haven. Community members for coming together to remove over 2,000 pounds of debris and discarded items during this cleanup. So it was amazing to see all of those folks coming together for that partnership. Then we had the watershed cleanup series. This happens on the second Saturday of the month, running from June to September. For this cleanup, we had 109 volunteers and removed over 2,300 pounds of debris and channel blocking vegetation out of the Rio de Flag. In our last cleanup of the season, 65 of those 109 volunteers showed up and can be seen pictured here in the presentation. Their amazing work was so good that we actually had to end early because our trucks reached full capacity for what we could haul away. So that was a wonderful cleanup. And then we had a lot of fun partnering with the City of Flagstaff Open Space for our native and invasive plant species workshops. These workshops helped to provide best practices and resources related to those plant species for the community. In Food Systems, we have an exciting update coming for the new growing season. We're expanding our community gardens to the McAllister Ranch property, so there will be more information to come for that. For Education and Outreach, our core opportunity that we offered was the Full Circle Garden Workshop Series. This series partnered with folks like Flagstaff Food Link, Pinnacle Prevention and Water Conservation to offer different workshops covering a variety of topics like seed-saving, fermentation and conserving water and best practices for garden spaces. So a great series there. Then we partnered with the Flagstaff Downtown Library and the Arboretum for the Pollinator Festival and Art Contest. I really enjoyed the art contest this year. There was a lot of amazing submissions and it's just always wonderful to see all of the artwork that's done for that. And then as part of the Festival of Science, we partnered for the Sustainable Building Tour and the Harvest Festival Event. The Sustainable Building Tour was for partnering with Coconino County and then the Harvest Festival was partnering with NACA. These events were showing off garden spaces and preparing for the harvest. Then for initiatives coming up, we have the Food Action Plan. This Food Action Plan is in its final stages and is going to be a roadmap for food systems here in Flagstaff. And we're excited to continue to get community feedback on their priorities for the Food Action Plan. So we're offering open houses throughout October. And then there's also an online survey that's open until the end of the month to gain some of that community feedback. That survey can be accessed on Connect Flagstaff from connect dot Flagstaff AZ dot gov forward slash Food Action Plan or scanning the QR code seen on the screen. Then in the wonderful world of waste prevention, we had a lot of efforts to help prevent waste from getting to the landfill or helping waste to get in the right place, starting with our residential food scraps program, which we were able to collect over 23,000 pounds of food waste that was then turned into compost. For Drop Off Day, we saw 533 households come through, dropping off RX medications, sharps, electronics, shredding and items like batteries and light bulbs. So it was really amazing to see so many folks come out to drop off their waste. Then we had our Fix-it Clinic, which is an amazing opportunity to combine fixers and items that need to be fixed. And for that, the fixers were able to fix over 1,000 pounds worth of items. And it was just really amazing to be in that space and see fixers coming together, not for the, just for the purpose of fixing items, but also for the education on how to fix the items. Then for Education and Outreach, we've had lots of presentations going to schools and local organizations and really anyone who was interested in hearing about waste education. And then Recycle by City, we were partnering with Solid Waste to get up-to-date and accurate information for schedules related to trash and recycling pickup and recycling here in Flagstaff. So overall, throughout that education and outreach, we reached over 300 community members. And then coming up, we have Drop Off Day coming on Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Coconino Health and Services Building on King Street. And then the Fix-it Clinic on Saturday, November 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Joyce Montoya Center. So more opportunities to get involved with waste prevention. Then for volunteerism, we have our Employee Volunteer Program. So in the past six months, we've seen over 100 unique events for folks have gone out and volunteered in the community. This is going from anything from the food bank to Habitat for Humanity to doing stewardism in Flagstaff. So pictured here is our city engineering team after a successful cleanup of the Rio de Flag and posing with all of this fun debris that they were able to pull out of the channel. So we want to say a big thank you to all of our city employee and staff who've come together to volunteer over the past six months. And then Volunteer Flagstaff. So this is our new software, we're very excited about it. It launched back in January. It is open to all city divisions to use to advertise out volunteer opportunities and help with signups. So far, the City of Flagstaff Open Space and Sustainability Programs have been the main users. The fun part about this program is not only does it allow for signups and to get folks involved with different opportunities, but it also tracks the amount of people using the software and the hours that have been committed towards volunteering. And then a special feature through the software is it also tracks the economic impact of all of that work being done in our community. So we're looking forward to continuing to roll out the software and getting more folks involved. And so thank you all for listening to the brief overview for the Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Section. I just wanted to say a super quick thank you to all of our partners. I was not able to name them all during today's presentation, but without their work, none of this would be possible and we are internally of this would be possible, and we are internally grateful for their partnerships. And so, thank you all. I'm now going to turn it over to Jenny Neiman.
Thanks so much, Sonoma. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Jenny Neiman, Climate Action Section Director. I'm going to start with talking quickly about our building energy programs. This really involves how do we improve buildings across our community, as well as the many buildings that are within the City of Flagstaff municipality. We are using federal funding from the Energy Efficiency Community Block grant currently. This funding so far has supported our PROS team and their efforts to electrify landscape equipment. This has incredible benefits for the health of the workers and the ease of doing those jobs, as well as noise and pollution at our parks. We also are supporting the installation of a few incredibly energy-efficient heat pumps across the city, one at the Sustainability Office, as Nicole mentioned, and two at fire department buildings. We've been really excited to leverage this federal funding for the benefit of many different divisions within the city. We're also supporting residents in several ways to make their homes more comfortable and efficient, helping them save money. Particularly, we're trying to help folks right now take advantage of federal tax credits that are expiring related to solar, EVs, and energy efficiency in their homes. Really quickly, I'm just excited to announce that we are now accepting applications for the Energy Upgrades for Healthy Homes program. This will bring the benefits of energy efficiency to residents that cannot afford the upfront costs of those upgrades. This is funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, or HUD. And these home improvements are available for both units that are rented, as well as owner-occupied. They help save residents money while also making homes healthier and more comfortable. And a huge shout-out to Jake Rotz for his tireless leadership of this complicated program. It's work that really helps ensures that climate action benefits everyone in our community. Next, we've got electric mobility. This program continues to support both residents and our city colleagues. First, we had two very successful EV ride-and-drive events this past spring, thanks to those council members who made it out or even shared their vehicles. We've launched our EV charging fees. This fee now ensures that the city recovers costs from EV charging and helps us continue to invest in charging. We have expanded our electric mobility fleet. This is a small program that actually provides a ton of benefits. We've recently provided scooters at Public Works and e-bikes at two water plants. The employees at some of our water plants have actually built e-bikes into their daily operations as they operate around their large campuses. And this program has really been a huge success, thanks to the many employees who have been willing to rethink how they do their daily work and how they get around town. In terms of resilience, there's a lot going on lately in the community. We were in Sunnyside just this past Friday distributing flood barriers to residents in need. We continue our monthly Climate Resilience Project conversations. We encourage anyone who's interested to come join those lively discussions and action days, where we just talk about building community resilience, and then often we go out and get our hands dirty. Resilience is deeply important to our climate goals, and this partnership with the library has been one of our longest-standing programs. This spring and summer, we had seven workshops on emergency preparedness in partnership with Flagstaff's Resilience Hubs. These topics include adaptation topics, like flooding and financial preparedness, as well as community asset mapping and make-your-own, or DIY, HEPA filtration systems. In terms of community equity, we really work to ensure that climate action is accessible to everyone in our community. We've secured private donor support for our very successful HEPA purifier distribution program. I know that some of our folks and folks from the Fire Department were giving out purifiers just last Saturday. We've also received a grant to work with community partners and hosted events that engage more than 300 residents in conversations about community resilience. We work to support youth leadership. Sustainability officers are employed at three different schools in Flagstaff. Again, this is actually through outside funding and a partnership with the City of Flag Phoenix. And our Youth Climate Leadership Academy hosted a teach-in this spring. Finally, our Equity Climate Advisory Group continues to provide invaluable input on our work. Switching gears a bit, I want to talk briefly about our update to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We're excited about this update. I believe I last talked with council about this last spring, and we're a couple months in now. We've been able to get some work going on this. But this update will really improve community understanding of the CMP. We want to make this plan more accessible and better speak to community priorities that we've heard about, like adaptation, resilience, and equity. This image explains what will change in the CMP. We'll update the design of the plan. This will create a plan that's meant to be accessed online and is also just more usable for the community. The updated plan will reflect our progress, as well as how far we have to go, and will highlight key focus areas like resilience and adaptation, as well as municipal operations. All of these changes are being done to make a plan that better reflects our work and is better used by the community. We just had three successful open houses where we had really great conversations with the community. We got to ask questions like, "What are you most concerned about?" "What is your vision for Flagstaff?" And "How do you want climate action to look in your neighborhood?" Just today, we are launching an online version of the open house on Connect Flagstaff, and the input we receive through this process will go to shape how we plan to implement the plan. So what we hear from our community will help us adjust how we take action, how we achieve the established goals of the plan. Passing it back to Nicole.
Thank you, Jenny. Now onto the Sustainability Commission. I just want to thank the seven commissioners who dedicate their time, their expertise, to the work in the Sustainability Division and just the broader community. You can see some photos here. The commission, over the last six months, have not only worked on the Neighborhood Sustainability Grants, which are now called the Flagstaff Sustainability Grants, but they hosted a discovery stroll, which invited past recipients to showcase their work and help to educate and inspire new applicants. And as you can see, I have a fun fact, even though this is looking ahead. The Flagstaff Sustainability Grants have closed, so we are no longer accepting applications. But we received 30 grant applications, and the commission is deep at work reviewing those applications, which will then be -- awards will be announced in January. So speaking of looking ahead, we've got a lot of things on deck. I won't walk through all of these. We will be, of course, informing the council and community on all the opportunities to educate themselves, take advantage of resources, and connect with the community. With that said, thank you so much, Council.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. We'll start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. My first question is for Sonoma. I was curious, and you might have had it in your slides there, and I just might have slept through it or something, but I was curious where locals go to sign up for the Community Stewardship Program.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. That's a great question. So to sign up for the stewardship programs, they would visit volunteerflagstaff@volunteer. flagstaffaz.gov. And then on the homepage, there is an option to request cleanup supplies if they're just looking to do a one-time cleanup. Or you would click on Sustainability, and it would take you to the Sustainability page in Volunteer Flagstaff, where there's options to fill out applications for our adoptive programs.
Thank you so much. That reminds me, too, that I need to sign up as well. So that's perfect. The next question will be for Jenny Neiman? Or Neiman? Is that right? Okay. Thank you, Jenny, for your presentation, and Nicole and Sonoma. Excellent work. It's very informative, and I think it helped me as a community member a lot as well. But Jenny, I was just wondering if you could explain the flood barrier program. When you mentioned it, I was curious, do you find where the need is and take the barriers out to that part of the community, or do you wait for a phone call from somebody and then react to that?
Thank you so much for the question, Councilmember Garcia. So this program is very community-based. So we have been doing, I want to say almost monthly, I'm looking for Sam, almost monthly distributions, where we actually go out and stand on corners in Sunnyside. Sometimes we bring things like lemonade. Sometimes we just have -- our team has actually built a door that they take out and put on a street corner in different neighborhoods to talk about what this flood barrier is. It's what we have found. We've really adjusted this program over the years. We have found what most people are interested in, as they think about flooding, is what's called a dam easy. It really kind of sets that up. So they have actually built this door frame and tried to demonstrate the dam easy in town. So we have been focusing primarily on where we have the greatest flood risk, which is Sunnyside and Southside. We were also in Southside this weekend as well. So it's been a program that's gotten a lot of adjustments as we've tried to figure out how to best meet community needs. And Nicole, if you would like to add anything, please.
Thank you for the question. We also, in addition to all the outreach, the on-the-ground outreach that we've been working on, we've worked closely with stormwater, and we've looked at mapping and have done significant targeted outreach to high-risk areas. So we continue to focus on the neighborhoods that have the highest level of risk, but we have done very pinpointing outreach for specific homes, too.
Thank you so much, and I think just the explanation of that really helps kind of highlight how important the Sustainability Department is within the city. Having those places of connectivity to the community that wouldn't normally have necessarily a department to fall back on, and you guys are making those connections. You guys are putting those resources in front of the community in most creative ways, including everything that Jenny said. And coming from somebody who was reached or called by creative marketing from the city, I think it's really important that we offer that to the community, and I'm really happy that you guys are taking that on. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nicole or Jenny, first I want to say I love all these programs. I've done the volunteer work. It's just really fun and rewarding. We see an immediate benefit visually, you know, when we do these big, I don't know what they are, wash basins or whatever, and it's just amazing how we can clean those up. And my nonprofit many years ago was a benefactor of one of the Sustainability Grants, and we were able to do a greenhouse. And so, thank you for just doing all those little things that make a big difference in our city and our community. I appreciate it. Question, though, on the progress update, if we can go back, Jenny was covering that. One thing that I really feel that I'd like to see more of is on the progress tracking, you know, we have a very aggressive goal to reduce our carbon emissions by 2030. So I think it'd be really helpful to see, like, some of these activities, you know, are good preventative, and they just help the overall health of our community. But, you know, I'd like to see where those numbers are shrinking. So not today, but, you know, we're right in the midst of, every division is planning for budget and stuff, and I'd like to start seeing that next year, saying, "And this activity is reducing our carbon emissions by X," because, you know, now the clock is kind of ticking. We're less than five years away and stuff, and so if we could, just a request, if we could start adding that to our presentation, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. And we hope that with this sort of redesign and update to the plan, that we are able to better talk about those metrics, are able to better connect those dots, and it being more of a living document online, right, can actually show that progress in a better way. So thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you. You guys all do a great job. Appreciate it.
And I have just a couple of comments. I do want to do a huge shout-out. With such a small team, the amount of work that you're able to get done is just astounding. Community engagement, partnerships, volunteerism, it's incredible. I did go out to the facility, and if, Council, if you haven't been out there, they do Walk the Talk, and it's impressive to see. Next time I'm out there, I'd like to see the heat pump. I have not actually seen one in person. And another big shout-out to the work out at Mobile Haven. I am involved in that neighborhood, and I think they've been trying to get that area cleaned up on their own for years and years, and they are just so appreciative. Every time I see them, this is mentioned, so huge kudos to that. And I really like seeing the volunteer analytics. I think that's great to watch what we're doing in the community, and I, too, need to sign up for something new to get my claws into, so thank you for the presentation. Anyone else, Council? Questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are down to Item 7, Wildfire Resilient Homes Initiative Program Introduction.
My name is Sam Wiley, and I'm a resilient specialist in the Sustainability Office, and I'm here tonight with Noah Baker, Flagstaff Fire Department's wildfire, climate, and community health specialist. And I'm so excited, we're so excited, to introduce our new pilot program, Wildfire Resilient Homes Initiative. But before we start with that, I wanted to pass it off to Noah for a brief statement.
So this program is inherently based around community risk reduction, and I think it's important to acknowledge something that happened, something big that happened last week, which is the loss of Deputy Chief Jerry Bills, who was our Deputy Chief of Community Risk Reduction. And I don't think we can adequately represent this program without acknowledging the shoulders that we stand on. We wouldn't be able to be here without the 19 years of service to the Flagstaff Fire Department that Deputy Chief Bills gave to us. So we give our thanks to him, and we keep his family and him in our thoughts as we go through this.
So tonight, we'll be introducing the purpose and the structure of this collaborative program and explaining how it aligns with community priorities and sharing how we plan to make progress in the year ahead. So for an overview, we'll start with the vision behind this initiative, walk through the core program components and the timeline, and then clarify the extent of the pilot phase of this program to manage expectations, and close by discussing why this work matters so much to us and to our community, and we'll explain how we hope to meet our community's priorities with this program.
So I've been in the fire service for almost 10 years now, which seems really frightening to say out loud as kind of a young man. But I'm really genuinely excited about this program, not only as somebody who's been in communities watching homes burn, which is one of the worst days we can imagine, but also somebody who's lost their home to wildfire before. I see this as a huge step in the right direction. So Flagstaff is obviously a wildfire-adapted ecosystem, and we accept, as residents of northern Arizona, that wildfire is part of that. We live in Flagstaff, and therefore we should try to make our community a wildfire-adapted community. We will never be able to prevent the fire that's in the woods, that's where it's supposed to be, but what we can do is prevent the fire that is in the community. So again, I'm really, really excited about this. We want to just help be the community servants that we are and represent our community the best way we can. One of the most interesting metrics that we have is financially based, which is for every dollar that is invested in home hardening, we see a $2 to $8 cost avoidance. Obviously, home hardening costs a lot less than rebuilding a home after a wildfire, but I think this shows a really, really good example of cost avoidance and helping out the community. So this pilot program is inherently collaborative. It is between us and the Flagstaff Fire Department, Wild and Fire Management Division, and the Sustainability Division, and our jobs right now is to represent the community, is to educate and empower our community to be the land managers that they are. If they own property in Flagstaff, you're a land manager. It doesn't matter how big it is. If you rent in Flagstaff, you're still a land manager. We're here to empower our community to be able to take the steps to reduce the risk. And not only that, we're here to give them the tools and information and grants to get that work done. One of the main ideas of this program is a collaborative nature between the community, and social science gives us a really good framing that says wildfire, yeah, there is an issue in the, in the built and natural environment, but ultimately, it is also a social issue. So our goal is to try to connect community members, have neighbors talk to each other, and, and empower that, that collaboration.
So, as Noah alluded to here, the Wildfire Resilient Homes Initiative rests on three guiding goals and principles: engage, educate, and empower. We'll engage residents through personalized home assessments and community events. We'll educate the community by highlighting the collective value of wildfire residents, linking residents with local contractors, and providing tailored recommendations for home hardening and evacuation preparedness. And then most importantly, we'll empower the community to act. We'll provide tools and financial support that make resilience achievable for everyone, even those facing physical or financial barriers to action. And these three steps, engagement, education, and empowerment, can work together to turn awareness into action. So, for an overview, Wildfire Resilient Homes Initiative includes four main components: home assessments, home hardening kits, community events, and resident grant support. This support and this program is open to all Flagstaff residents, whether they rent or own their homes. We want everyone to feel included in this program. The budget for the pilot phase, the, across this fiscal year, is $100,000, and we want about 80% of that to go directly into the hands of community members. This is an empowering tool in the form of grant support and those home hardening kits.
So, home assessments are a really important aspect of this program, but they're not a new thing to us. Many members of council, Vice Mayor, Mayor, you've had us come out and do home assessments on properties all around the city. So this is a really important aspect of our day-to-day operations, but we continue to get better at them and imp, and implore new tools. These assessments are an important thing for this program because they allowed us to, or they allow us to have face-to-face interaction and education with homeowners, which social science shows us that that is the most effective thing we can do. We use the metaphor, when we're doing good communication, that we're in someone's driveway talking to them face-to-face, like their neighbor would be, and we can share some really, really powerful and empowering messages as wildfire and home hardening professionals. We use a new software package called WUI, which is a personalized report that is generated after we do the assessment. So it not only uses satellite data to assess different zones around the home, but it also takes all of our recommendations into consideration, puts it into a central document, and then that information gets given to the homeowner and us. So we are the two folks that have that information, and we see that tool as a really, really powerful way to communicate. One of the other aspects of this program that I'm really excited about is, I'll preface this by saying, I do a lot of home assessments, and I see a barrier for a lot of people of not being immediately empowered to take action. A way that we're mitigating that now going forward is our wildfire resilience kit. So each, each participant, each participating household gets a wildfire resilience kit, which helps implement those home hardening measures and those recommendations immediately. These are all things that our Flagstaff Fire Department firefighters and Wildland Fire Management Division have all come up with as important things for homeowners. So, we have a lot of cool stuff in here. We have a list up on the screen. I won't read it out for you, but we see this as a really good way to break down the barrier.
So, with community events, this program can become truly collective. Seasonal neighborhood gatherings and workshops can focus on wildfire risk reduction and the practical preparedness efforts that we can all take. These events encourage neighbors to come together, to learn from one another, and to find ways to take joint action, whether that means a cleanup, or a demonstration of a good practice that someone has taken at their own home, or simply sharing other useful information with one another. And building community awareness and participation is key to sustaining the momentum of this project and the impact of the pilot program here. If we are doing this on our own, we'll only get so far, but if we can get community buy-in and re, help folks recognize that they can take this action on their own, we can drastically increase the spread of this program. And then grant support. So we have the opportunity to offer grants of up to $600 for residents who need additional help completing mitigation projects. So after someone has completed a home assessment, if they demonstrate that they have a need to find some additional support in completing the tasks that we are suggesting of them, that's where we can jump in with this kind of support. So, these grants will prioritize community members with physical and financial need, and they do have to complete a home assessment first. But these grants are ultimately an equity tool. They're a way of helping ensure that the community resilience that we're trying to build isn't limited, isn't limited to only those with the means and ability to take some of this action on their own.
So, in terms of outreach, the Flagstaff Fire Department, I'm, I'm a very proud individual of our program, and we've done some really, like pioneer-level communication in the last couple of years. But there's no point in being good at anything if you're not trying to get better, and there's no point at being better if you're not trying to share that information with other people. So our outreach plan is adaptable, and it is designed to specifically meet the needs of the community where it lies. We know the importance of outreach after the last three years, and, and we see it. We're not just firefighters, we're also trusted community messengers, and we're also very trusted to share the right messages. And we see that no program revolving around the public will ever be adequately successful without a good outreach program. So with that, here are the things that we are going to be doing for outreach, but some of these are going to be tailored specifically towards neighborhoods that, you know, this will work well for, or maybe it won't work well for. We're going to try to be adaptable, we're going to try to be social scientists here and try to do things correctly. So, first of all, we have our Wildfire Resilient Homes Initiative website. That's a place where folks can get started, they can sign up digitally for a home assessment. No more phone calls unless you really want it. Next, we have community events. Last year, we put on a really successful community event in University Heights with over 400 attendees. We want to share that with other neighborhoods across the city and foster that sense of community and foster that sense of care. We have direct mailers and door-to-door. These are going to be for high-risk areas and high-risk homes. That'll be me in the fire truck coming, knocking on the door saying, hey, can I give you a home assessment right now? We're going to try to go right after that when we can. We have partnerships as well with the resilience hubs and local groups that are spreading this message, and then obviously, social media is a big tool for us these days. One of the thing I, one of the things that I do want to talk about is fire pathways. So how do we identify a high-risk community? It's not just with our, our plethora of experience in the Fire Department. Yeah, that's good, but we can also use fire pathway modeling to identify specific areas. So, you know the term watershed? This gives us the fire shed. It shows us where fire is going to go the quickest, where is most at risk, and what, where are important areas, not just for landscape-level mitigation, but those homes there. Research shows us that if we mitigate the right homes in the right area, we can prevent a lot of homes from burning down as well. Additionally, this gives us a really good idea of those high-risk areas, because when we have homes burning, that's a battle we don't lose, or we don't win very often. That is not an easy thing for us to fight. We get to empower the community in those areas to be their own firefighter beforehand so that we can be their firefighter when they need it. It also keeps us safer. Ultimately, I want, when firefighters are coming into the city, to help us when we need help in our time of need, I want them to be as safe as possible and have the best chance of success. These fire pathways and models give us that information.
Okay, timeline. So, I'll start with program outreach. Now Noah and his team have been doing an amazing job of conducting outreach about the, this program and these principles for quite a while now, but this moment right now marks the start of the coordinated outreach plan that we laid out in a couple, a couple slides ago, and that pro, that plan will continue throughout this pilot phase. Home assessments, similarly, have already been going on for quite a while, but we hope to continue them and ramp up the frequency of the assessments that we're conducting. Community events and grant distribution will begin in the winter and the spring, and then we'll be back to report on our progress to you guys in about six months. And I want to take a moment here to talk about the expectations in the pilot phase of this program. So, as a pilot, this initiative is about experimentation, and it's about learning. Our early outcomes will be limited in scale, but the systems, and the partnerships, and the community trust that we foster at this stage will set the stage for the long-term success that we aspire to. Flagstaff has already made significant progress in confronting wildfire risk, but the face, the pace of the threat that we face continues to grow faster than our current efforts. Our goal is not just to protect homes today, but to create a model that can be replicated and scaled up in the future. Ultimately, we're investing in education and empowerment, because when residents take one action towards resilience or towards protecting their homes, they're much more likely to take another.
One of the powerful things about this program is you're not just investing in mitigation, we're investing in our culture, we're investing in our people to do the work that needs to be done. We're not just going out and doing that thinning treatment, we're giving the tools to homeowners all across the city to do that work themselves, and that's incredibly powerful. And by enabling our residents to do that important mitigation work beforehand, we're increasing resilience to wildfire all across the city. I won't get into the data, but I did mention it before, we, we mitigate a neighborhood that protects us, another neighborhood, from that fire coming through, and really significantly can reduce the amount of homes that are lost. And as Sam said, research shows that when we get a homeowner to take one mitigation action, they're significantly more likely to take more, and I see this firsthand when I go do a home assessment. That's the first step in them wanting to do that mitigation action, but then I start getting calls after, and they're asking me about specific things, and I love that because it builds a partnership between us, but I also get to see the change that we've enacted. This program is designed by the priorities of, of the public in terms of wildfire, and we're public servants, so we're here to help. What we have done is gather the tools that we think are going to be most effective towards the public's concerns, and their concerns are valid. Wildfire resiliency, it makes sense to be concerned about that. We live in a forest, things are getting hotter and drier definitively, and we're seeing more fire in a bad way. We get to empower these folks by breaking down the financial and physical barriers of implementation, and what's really incredible about this program, I know I keep saying that, but it's because I mean it, is that we have a very tangible opportunity to not only affect the lives of our residents in Flagstaff and reduce their risk to wildfire, but also, we have a very tangible opportunity to empower other communities across the West to do the same thing that we're doing, because we're, we're going to show them that it works.
Can I interrupt? Oh, questions, perfect. I saw that Councilmember Spence has a couple of questions for you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Could you go back to one of your first slides? It showed a building that was on fire. Could you explain what's going on here, and, and what's the significance of this demonstration?
Yeah, absolutely. So this demonstration, as far as I can tell, and I could be wrong, is being conducted by IBHS, which is an organization that measures mitigation practices effectively. So what we're seeing here on the right is a small structure, be it, that has been wildfire-prepared. So we see that there's no flammable vegetation between zero to five foot from the structure. We see that the roof is clear, et cetera, and then you can't see it, but the fence up against this is actually metal. What we see on the left is a structure that does not have that. It's a structure that has a wooden fence that has allowed fire to actually get towards the home, it has vegetation right up against it, and this rings true in, in our slides that we see when we go fight fire. We, we can validate that as well.
Thank you, and I have a question with regard to lightning strikes either on a dwelling or a tree that's close to the dwelling, resulting in the dwelling catching on fire. How many such lightning strikes are there a year in Flagstaff?
I don't have that information and the specific statistics on me, but I would imagine there is a decent amount of lightning that hits homes. I'm sure I can follow up with you and the clerk and get that information to you.
The point of asking the question is, a lightning arrestor system can be installed on a building. Is this part of your education program?
As, as of right now, it is not part of our education and implementation program, but we can follow up and, and discuss that need further as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'm not seeing any. Oh, Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, just to chime in here, very excited about this project. You know, this is a pilot project, and I hope to see that it demonstrates success, and as it, as that happens, maybe we can really bring this whole thing up to scale and do some serious protection in the community. Can you go back to that cartoon graphic a couple slides forward, I think? I'd love to see something like that with Flagstaff laid out, you know, just, just sort of a gross cartoonized representation of what our fire shed looks like, and, you know, just a large overview of, of what neighborhoods are most resilient and what neighborhoods are most at risk, and how those intermesh with each other. A little, you know, back, placemat graphic like this would be, I think, very helpful in terms of outreach as well, and just general fire awareness for the whole community. Very much looking forward to supporting this program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
Just, just one more thing. You know, there's, there's, I, I meant to mention this, and I'd forgotten to add it. There's, I've said it before, there's so many times when we're sitting up here, and I feel frustrated, I won't speak for others, I guess, but I'll speak for myself. I feel frustrated that we can't do more. We're preempted by state legislation, there's so many things that municipalities really can't tackle the way that we would like to when we come into office and we have big ideas, and we're sort of, we realize that we're in a box in a lot of ways. This is one of the programs that I, that I see that council can really get behind and support and feel like we're, we're, we're moving the needle and making a difference. And I just appreciate the creativity that goes into this and the can-do attitude behind it.
Thank you. Can assure you that Noah and I share that excitement, and that's why we're doing this work.
Thank you, and I can feel your excitement, and I did have the home assessment, and I, I think that everyone should take advantage of that. It's very helpful, it made me think of things that I didn't even see that needed attention. And before you leave, I do want to bring up Jerry Bills, and just, our hearts are going out to all of you, we've had some loss in our fire, and I went to, through the FLP, the Flagstaff Leadership Program, with Jerry, and so I got to know him pretty well for those two years that we were in the program together, and I just, I, I'm sorry for the loss, and I know we're all thinking about you and supporting you any which way we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving down to item eight, shaping public art through public input at Downtown Connection Center and the Cleo Murdoch Park.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Jana Weldon. I'm very lucky enough to manage the beautification arts and sciences
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Jana Weldon. I'm very lucky enough to manage the Beautification Arts and Sciences Program. Presenting with me tonight is one of two project administrators with the program, Kristen Correto, other side. Together, we will present how public input can shape public art through examining two projects and seek your input on how we can expand. The program is always aspirational in the arts, and we seek to put the public in public art. We use many methods to do this. Each plays a role, and sometimes we have to manipulate them per project. We make sure, though, that the community is always involved in selecting the artist and give input prior to the artist's designing. And then we seek responses after initial design and before moving to approvals by commissions, community associations, and by council, which are also comprised of very vested and very engaged community members. In my presentation, I will go over the, you know, public input tools that form the Southside Grove timetable, specifically the timetable at the DCC. And then Kristen will do the same for the sculpture, Russell, which will be installed in about a month at the new Cleo Murdoch Center park. For the DCC, the artist was needed, was kind of complicated, to do integrated art elements to the site overall and to work with Mountain Lion's interdisciplinary team that was already hired. The procurement process sought qualified, experienced artists and design team and integrated public art. A broad spectrum of vested community members reviewed and scored the applicants. Even the city representative on the selection panel worked extensively in the Southside plan and therefore had many community interactions from that experience. The selection panel recommended to BIPAC the artist team of Laura Hadad and Tom Drogen, who some of you I know met at the opening, who had a wealth of project types all over the country and had a lot of community engagement experience. BIPAC and council both endorsed this recommendation. Before the artist team embarked, though, our program wanted them to hear the stories and the significance of the place. So we pulled out four tools from our public input kit, and we pull out multiple tools because sometimes one won't reach the way we want to. So we like to have a little backup. So before the artist team, you know, the first thing we did, and this was one of the ones that didn't reach as many people as we hoped to in the community, we held a photo contest to help the artist team learn about the Southside just through visual language. And so we had like three categories, you know, one of which was, you know, special places or features that bring light to the Southside. We actually only ended up getting four photographs. So that was a bit of a disappointment, so we put a lot more effort into our next set of tools. We, a community forum survey was conducted, that was the tool at the time, is now Connect Flagstaff. Again, the focus, though, was on eliciting what's special about the place. And the response was quite fun and imaginative. We got a lot of responses to this. And they really stitched together like a quilt. It was kind of an amazing outcome. The artist team came for a site visit in May of 2021. You can see we were in full COVID-19 decor, but they stayed with a local friend, so they knew somebody here, and really immersed themselves in the activities of Flagstaff. But really what stood out was the circle that we had with Southside community residents. Some were from businesses and some were representatives from the Southside Community Association. And it left such a strong impression, the actual shape of this group and its impact actually impacted the shape of the sculpture itself. And then they did a tour with the city planner and historic preservation officer, which really grounded them in the municipal history of the area, which was really important with all the, you know, flooding issues and, you know, diversity issues that have occurred, you know, throughout, you know, the Southside. The artist team came up with preliminary designs after this input, and these are the vested associations, commissions, and boards that gave feedback, like direct feedback to them. And then they tweaked a few things in response to that. And we presented the design elements of the Southside Grove to council for feedback as well. And you, some of you may remember these slides, although it's been about three years. We noted the angle at the time, the angle of the trunks and the circular form actually came out of that artist site visit with the community. And this was the view looking up from the inside. The branches have a kind of enclosing, you know, effect, and the outstretched arms reminded people of the Hands Holding Hands mural at the Murdoch Center. But it is the timetable design inside the Grove where more specific input would be needed, and it's the input that we conducted in the last year. The concept for the timetable came from the history of the lumber industry in the Southside, how tree rings mark time, and the need to be inclusive in the historic text. Text describing cosmic Arizona, Flagstaff, indigenous, and Southside history would be woven in among these tree rings to create a concentric timeline. Some of the resources for the text, you know, who should we ask, came from the council work session. And some of them came from staff because we involved the indigenous administrator of community initiatives. And we included the historical preservation officer. But some of it, you know, came just from everything that we had done in the project so far and on another project, which was the Coconino Scroll out at the airport, which actually generated a lot of history on its own. And so we had contacts from that that we dug into. The completed project was installed in May of this year. Just a few more installation shots for fun. But the timetable is kind of a standalone. And here's a detail with the rainbow cast by one of the prisms at the end of the branches, which is fun. You should go out there and try to catch rainbows. You can go around and often catch them in your hand. We see people do that, too. But, you know, you can see that the text is very readable. As part of the package, I sent you all the text for this council session, but these are the texts at the center. And it begins with a bit of history, the way science informs us, but it also notes that this is not the only way to tell the story of the region. At the outer edge, so I'm going to just jump from beginning to end, is the text more focused on the Southside community history, people, and events, with the last date being the opening of the Downtown Connection Center? All the text fitting with community really created a rich tableau. The timetable is very popular. We see people out there all the time. I do want to apologize for the space portal in this image. I took this picture from inside the building because I saw people standing around. I just want to assure everybody that aliens have not beamed up this sculpture. With that aside, Kristen Correto will now present on the next project. The public input at the timetable, you know, with the exception of the photo contest, was pretty easy to obtain and robust, but that doesn't always happen. And Kristen will highlight what our program does when at first we don't succeed.
Thank you, Jana. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. So today I'm going to talk about what we do do when our outreach efforts encounter challenges. So before the sculpture, Russell, was designed, an artist had to be selected for this project. And so while there was a call to artists being disseminated nationwide for an artwork that reflected the historical context of the Southside and for an artwork that was both inspirational in either form or content to the viewer, a selection panel was being convened. And this selection panel was comprised of various individuals, two members of the Beautification and Public Art Commission, and I'd just like to give a shout out to Councilmember Garcia, who previously to being elected to council, served on our Beautification and Public Art Commission, a professor from Northern Arizona University, four Southside residents, including one community member with very strong Southside roots, and then a member of Flagstaff's lived Black experience. So they convene, they went through the proposals, and they selected five finalists ultimately to do a site visit to the Southside, to the Murdoch Community Center, to learn more about this organization, its history, and more about the history of the Southside in general. During the site visit, the artists enjoyed a walking tour with the historic preservation. And then they were also given results from a recently-held focus group. And this focus group participated in creative exercises to unearth more information, more history, more tidbits about the Southside neighborhood and the residents' current and past. And one of the creative exercises is shown in more detail here. So participants were asked to think about the Murdoch Community Center and to think about the Southside in general, and to see if a particular type of music, a particular genre of music, or perhaps a particular song came to mind when they were thinking of this. And these are just the kind of creative exercises that we are known for in Beautification Arts and Sciences. And so I wanted to share the response here. One participant stated, "When I think of the Murdoch Community Center and all of its history, I think about my family and the community that I was raised in. I think of my grandma's favorite hymns in church. I also think of the African drums that I heard during a Kwanzaa celebration one year, or my family singing 'Happy Birthday' to my nephew turning one, or when my grandma turned 92, or even music for a friend's high school graduation party. I hear a lot of good memories. I feel at peace, reminiscent, and proud." So all of the potential artists who came to the city for a site visit, they went on their way, and after a month, they submitted a proposal, submitted proposals, excuse me. And the proposal that was selected by our selection panel can be seen here. It is entitled Russell, and it's by artist Beth Nybek. And this proposal was reviewed and approved by both the Southside Community Association and the Beautification and Public Art Commission. You will see that the artwork is in the shape of a leaf, and this significance is twofold. First, it reflects and celebrates nature. Second, it highlights our interconnectedness. And it highlights the singular, or the individual, I should say, and collective memories of current and former Southside residents and those with strong ties to the Southside, providing the viewer a glimpse into the magical qualities of this neighborhood. Its name is actually, it is called Russell because of the rustling of leaves that are a reminder to all of us about the movement and vitality that envelop us every single day as we move about our day. Let me go back to this. It stands eight feet tall and approximately four and a half feet wide, and it is fabricated from Wethering Steel. So once Beth Nybek's proposal was selected, Beautification Arts and Sciences staff, along with the artist, embarked in a very robust outreach plan. And we had one objective, which was to get all of the current and former Southside residents, and again, individuals with strong ties to the Southside community, whether they be youth, whether they be adults, or whether they be seniors, to provide us with collective, excuse me, to provide us with memories. And we'll talk about the memories that were shared and how they are integrated shortly into the artwork. But three key messages led this outreach campaign, and those are listed here. The first is inclusion, the second is collaboration, and the third is community pride. So initially, there were two ways to participate. In the fall of 2024, we programmed two public events at Murdoch Community Center. And despite this very robust outreach plan, despite lots of advertising and PR, which you'll see shortly, it was attended by just eight community members. And despite a very strong showing from La Plaza Vieja, whose residents have very strong Southside ties, not everyone was at the table. And so we needed to pivot our outreach, we needed to rethink our outreach, and we knew that we had to try again to make sure that diverse voices were at the table and that everybody who wanted to could participate. So in the spring of 2025, we tried this outreach again, this time utilizing Connect Flagstaff's online survey. And as you will see, our outreach was much more effective. We had almost 900 views, almost 800 visits, and approximately 23 submissions that were And here is a brief summary of all of the outreach that we did for both the fall and the spring opportunities to share memories. We canvassed approximately 140 homes, we did print and digital advertisements, we were interviewed on the radio, we shared out this opportunity through our social media platforms, we did personalized emails to communities and neighborhood associations, to our own listserv, and we even had a feature in the Arizona Daily Sun. But the primary method that really helped us succeed in this project is Connect Flagstaff. And so this is a screenshot of what our survey looked like, the upper part of our survey. So we provided information about the project, we provided ways to participate or how to participate. The artist also posted a video message, which was very successful. And what you don't see is the actual survey form, and this included two opportunities for community members to submit these memories to ultimately be integrated into Russell, into the sculpture. And we had a field that was optional, and this was a contact information field, and this was actually the key to our success. So as I was watching or monitoring responses, if I can be honest, they were trickling in. And one day I came across a response, and it was from a former Southside resident. Based on the commentary that he left, it was clear that he was not in favor of this project, and he had concerns with the project in general. I thought to myself, if he's one person who's sharing, there might be others who have the same sentiment who are not sharing. Luckily for us, he left his contact information, so I emailed him. And I asked, first I thanked him for sharing his feelings, and I asked him if he would be open to having a conversation and if he would be open in discussing his concerns about the project. And thankfully, he agreed. So the next week, I gave him a call, and we had almost an hour-long conversation. He talked about his, the hesitancy he had with the project, which is that in his experience, more often than not, public art celebrates a community, but it does so very superficially. It really doesn't engage with the community members, it doesn't pay homage to the individuals for whom the artwork... for whom the artwork is intended. And then he talked about the changes that have happened in the South Side since his formative years. He talked about the gentrification, and he talked about how the South Side no longer is what it used to be. And while I was empathetic, my words could absolutely not undo what had been done, but what I could tell him, and what I assured him, was that in each and every one of our public art projects, community input is essential. And that is from conception to completion to celebration. We do everything with community input. And so after the conversation with me, and after speaking subsequently with the artist, not only was he on board to participate, but he was willing to help us with our outreach. So he was willing to connect us to his friends, his family members, and his former neighbors in the South Side. So I'd like to take this time to give a special thank you to that community member. His name is John Dunlap. John, if you are listening, thank you so much for your assistance with outreach, for listening to us, and for being willing to have a conversation to advance this project. We'd also like to give a special thanks to the Warden family, Cecily Warden Grant and Crystal Warden Gant, sorry, Cecily Warden and Crystal Warden Gant. They were instrumental in helping us with our outreach as well. They took hard copies back of the survey back to their families and friends. They even transcribed memories from their families and friends and delivered those to us. So a very special thank you to all three of these individuals. So what community memories were shared from the fall in 2024 and from our outreach in 2025? Well, there were dozens upon dozens upon dozens. And these were all shared with artist Beth Nybek. And from these memories, twenty-seven were selected, and you can read them here, but I will highlight a few in no particular order. We have old Mexican love songs, the Dog House, also known as Cogdill Recreation Center. We have baseball games, falling in love, a place where you were seen, heard, and celebrated. We have family representation on every block. Everyone knew everyone and their entire family. We have Food Town, and finally, Our Lady of Guadalupe. So here are these community memories integrated into the artist's design. And so these memories, as you are standing or will be standing in front of the sculpture, they invite remembrance, they invite connection, and if you aren't familiar with some of these, they might involve exploration. But collectively, they tell the story, or a bit of the story, about the South Side and its people. And so we shared these preliminary designs with the community. We shared them with everyone who participated, everyone we had contact information for. And then we also presented to the South Side Community Association. We asked them, how well do the phrases taken together connect to the South Side of Flagstaff? What are the particular phrases you like most? Do you have questions, concerns, suggestions, or support? And we enthusiastically received support for this project. And many of the participants said how very personal the memories in this sculpture were. They were not superficial, it was not a superficial celebration, it was very personal and heartfelt. And so here is the final design of Russell by Beth Nybek. So thank you to the following individuals for their contributions, and thank you to those who contributed anonymously as well through Connect Flagstaff. So before I invite you to ask a question, I do want to say, if you feel so inclined, feel free to visit Connect Flagstaff. And now through November ninth, we have a survey, and we are asking community members to share what is special about Buffalo Park and what community members would like to see featured in a forthcoming public mural that will be on the Buffalo Park water tank. So with that, I open it up for questions, if council has any questions, or if you have any comments to guide future engagement by Beautification Arts and Sciences.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Council comments, questions? Councilmember Garcia?
I don't necessarily have a question, because it seems to me that inside of that, the packet today, everything was covered really well. But I just wanted to, to, to really just highlight and add a finer point to the community collaboration. As you noted, I was part of the Beautification and Public Art Commission for several years before becoming on council. And it was, it was always a real eye-opener to, to be on, a part of the process, where at every turn, every avenue, every, every corner in the process, community input was emphasized by the staff and by the commission, sometimes overwhelmingly. And not to lethargize the process or make it any more difficult, but to make sure that we sussed out all of the community input, to add more than just art to our sense of place, but to also add the soul of the community that once resided in that place, or the story that that place told, as featured in tonight's packet. It, it, it was a part of a process that was, but was led by, by the commission and, and also partnered by staff and management of that department. Heidi and David had a big part in, in making sure that the continuity of community input was always strengthened at, at every avenue, so much so that there's been times I remember that we actually stopped the, or halted the process momentarily to get more community input. So the, the amount of community input, and then coupled with the, I guess, kind of the stringent participation by the B-PAC to garner the right artist for the job, is, is something to be noted and was clearly emphasized in this, in this PowerPoint today. And it, it just really warms my heart to, to have seen the evolution of the process of the B-PAC get to the point to where the community is well-represented through all of our art pieces, and it's not just art, what, what, it's just not just plop art that is put out there to look cool, but it really tells the story, and the more time you spend with it, you gain a viscerality and a sense of where the art came from as far as the community standpoint and the history of Flagstaff. And while I know that this takes place in other communities, it, it's, it's prevalent in everything that we do here at the City of Flagstaff, in community development, and through the Beautification and Public Art Commission in your department. So it, I know it takes an entire staff to do these, and it takes an army to do these, and I want to make sure that every staff member hears from me how much I appreciate the goals and the priorities that were set by past commissions, and are maintained by the management of, of that department, and carried out by the staff, and how much that means to, to me, and how much I know that that means to the history of Flagstaff and our community. So just, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Any other questions? And I also want to commend staff for ensuring that the community was at the heart of these projects. It's very powerful to see the local voices being heard, and in the final design, the projects really reflect who we are as a city. So I just, I really appreciate the time and effort and thought that went into both projects. If you haven't been to the South Side Grove, I would highly recommend looking at the table and the timeline. There's benches there that you can just kind of sit and relax and have a, a moment to yourself. And with Russell, you know, try and try again. Thank you for not letting that go and really making sure that there was the participation in that. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you. We are on item nine, discussion of resuming paid advertising program at the Flagstaff Pulliam Airport and draft advertising policy.
Sorry, I thought Heidi was teeing this up for me. Is this presentation down here? No, I will not do a better job than she just did. That is true. All right, council, we are here to discuss the possibility of restarting the paid advertising program at the Flagstaff Pulliam Airport. Tonight, we're going to give a recap of the discussion we had in 2023 about this same subject, things that have happened since 2023. We've had some discussions with some, some of our partners in the community, some changes to the draft policy, and we'll take some questions, public comment if any, and then get direction from council. So dating back to 2023, even prior to that, we had two paid advertising programs at the City of Flagstaff. We had one at Flagstaff Pulliam Airport, and we had another one at our J. Lively Activity Center. We sold advertising on the dasher boards at J. Lively, and we sold advertising on television screens in the Flagstaff Pulliam Airport. In 2023, we had a request come through the airport that raised some questions and concerns about how we were applying our then policy. So through those discussions, we decided to propose a revised policy to attempt to address some of those concerns and questions. We had a discussion with council about that draft policy. In September of 2023, we actually had two policies. We had one for the airport and one for the recreation centers. Council gave some input, and during that discussion in September of 2023, we then took that input and came back to council in November of 2023. At that meeting, we proposed some changes, we discussed those changes. Ultimately, after some discussion with council, council gave direction to cease the paid advertising programs at both the airport and at the recreation center. Sorry, I'll try to speak into the mic. So since then, we have ceased both programs. We have not had paid advertising at the airport or at J. Lively since fall of 2023. Since then, we have had some meetings with the stakeholder who raised the concerns about our advertising at the Flagstaff Pulliam Airport. We met with him and his council, oh, a few months ago. And through those discussions, we proposed the revised draft policy. So if you recall back to the members that were on council in fall of 23, when we presented the proposed policy, we had some options with regard to some potential prohibitions on content related to weapons. And we never really got into picking one of those options or, you know, discussing those options in a lot of detail. But we did with the stakeholder in question, and we met with him and talked through those options with him and his council, and we think we settled on a version of the draft policy that he was comfortable with. And since then, we have discussed internally whether, in light of that outcome of having what we think is an agreeable policy with at least that one stakeholder who was raising the issues, whether it would make sense to come back to council and propose reopening the paid advertising program at the airport. We did talk about possibly reopening it at the recreation center, but the recreation director was not interested in going down that path at this time, so we're really only talking about the airport today. So changes to the draft policy since fall of 23. We expanded the purpose section, we added some additional goals, we expanded a statement regarding non-public forum status, we clarified the permitted types of advertising, added a limitation on elected public service announcements, this was something that came up right about that same time, and we wanted to address. We clarified the restrictions on ads depicting graphic violence. We added a restriction depicting use of weapons in a manner intended to harm an individual or an animal. And that was really, that bullet point there was really where we, we came to some resolution with the stakeholder. We generalized that prohibition to weapons and focused really on, you know, how they were being depicted in the advertising, not just the weapon itself. We added a restriction on advertising that promotes or markets adult-oriented businesses, and we added a statement regarding viewpoint neutrality, and that's a requirement under the law, under First Amendment law, in a non-public forum, you can restrict content, but your restrictions have to be viewpoint neutral. So we made that very clear in the policy, that viewpoint neutrality. And that's really where we're at today. I'm happy to walk through the policy in detail if you want me to, it was in your packet. If anyone has any questions, I can pull that up, and we can, we can focus on any piece you want. But I, like I said before, I think the, the main point that was of a concern to the stakeholder was the section on weapons. It was initially as firearms, that, no, there's no mention of firearms in the current policy. Like I said, we've become more general with that prohibition, and it's weapons and the use of those weapons in the manner that they're being depicted in the advertising. So really, the question for council today is, is council interested in us reopening this program at the airport? And if you are, we will finalize this policy, it's currently in draft form, and come back to council with formal adoption of that policy and recognition that we're going to start taking paid advertising at the airport going forward.
Before I get with the questions, city manager has a comment.
Yes, and thank you, thank you, Kevin, for walking us through that. It's just a little bit of more context to what Kevin has presented to you. You know, underlying all of this has, is, is a financial consideration. Our airport operates, has an enterprise fund, and as such, it's treated as a government-run business, which is another way of saying we try to make it self-sustaining financially for the most part. Council will know that over the last few years, that's been a challenge. We lost a key airline a couple of years back. I think great progress is being made to bring in a second carrier and perhaps more, stay tuned on that. The budget team has been working closely with our staff at the airport and with Economic Vitality to try to find the means to fill the gap, fill the void that has been created over time with some lost revenues out there. When we lost the, the marketing, and I think it was a very good decision a couple of years ago, you know, it was kind of looked upon as hitting the pause button. We needed, we needed some time to look at this, there are a lot of, lot of legal analysis going into this, thank you to Kevin and the legal team for that. We, as Kevin noted, also worked with the, the party who was a bit vocal about our policy previously, wanting to make sure we were heading in a good direction. We kind of looked at that, I guess, as a bit of a litmus test, to, to make sure we were getting to a place where, where we can be comfortable with our policy, and I think, I think we're heading there. I just wanted to emphasize, we, we need the revenues at the airport, and, and there are many, many sources of revenues, and there, Heidi and her team, they meet regularly to, to scratch their heads and come up with additional revenue sources. This is one of those, and so I'm, I'm just nudging this along. If, if we can get to a place where this policy can be adopted and put into place, and we can start re-advertising again at the airport, I think it would be a good financial move. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I can't remember the exact numbers, but it didn't seem, like, one of the, the deciding factors besides the liability risk was that it wasn't a big financial impact to us anyway, not when you compare the risk versus the benefit. Heidi, do you have? Heidi, do you have a number on that?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. Prior to us taking over our own advertising, Clear Channel was doing it, and we made about $25,000 a year. When we took it over, we made about $41,000 a year. We had lost some big advertisers, NAU for one, because that was during a time where they had budget cuts, and the first thing that some people have to do is to stop doing advertising, and that was what NAU had to do at the time.
Thank you. So just, I'm thinking out loud, but you know, I know that in the summertime, American has pulled back on some of their outbound flights. And so we don't even have the traffic through there that we did a couple of years ago. Is that a correct assessment?
Councilwoman Matthews is on the airport commission, so she hears a lot of this. Yes, and when we were doing advertising our own, we had American Airlines and United Airlines. So we were having over 100,000 employments. Now we are currently around 79,000 employment, so we do have less feet that are going through the airport at this time. So you're accurate on that.
I'm still focused on our hangars. I know that's the bigger bang for our buck. I'm just, Kevin, I'd like you to maybe comment on, I'm not, I don't have a legal background, so I'm going to weigh on you. Even with these changes, what is our exposure to somebody else deciding that something that we're not thinking about right now wants to advertise that is not within our appetite? I mean, are we exposing ourselves a little bit with that?
I'm going to avoid the liability exposure. I'll just say, I think whenever you have this type of policy, you could always have someone who looks to push the boundaries of it, who looks to come in with something that doesn't fit within the policy and then wants to claim that it is violating their First Amendment rights. I think you always have that threat. These types of policies are attacked a lot. We see a lot of cases regarding advertising on buses. We do see it in airports, but you know, we see it all over the country about people questioning the advertising policies for advertising on buses. It's just a common claim. So I can't tell you, we would never have someone question our policy just because we did work with this one stakeholder who was the vocal individual who was raising his concerns. But I think we could have that with anything.
Thank you. And then Heidi, one last question for you. What is the time commitment to really do a good job in selling advertisement at the airport? We have a small staff over at the airport. What would be the additional estimated time commitment to add this to a job responsibility?
In all honesty, it's a lot of work to put a program back together that was taken apart. But I know that Claire, along with myself, we would do our best to put something back together. But I'm not going to lie, I would have a hard time forecasting this to the budget team on how much revenue we could possibly see. Because when advertisers leave something, they either stop advertising or they go somewhere else and put their dollars. So we would be committed to trying to secure them back and others, but I would not be able to tell you a time. I think that'd be putting way too much pressure on Claire Harper, our airport programs manager, quite honestly.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask why we can't include the Jay Lively advertisements as well as the airport in one policy? It seems like what's good for the airport is good for Jay Lively. Why not have one policy that covers both venues?
So we initially divided up the policy, created two policies, because when you're looking at, like I said, you can, in a non-public forum, like the Jay Lively Recreation Center as well as the airport, you can restrict based on content. And those restrictions may be different for the airport versus the recreation center. For example, you may be comfortable with advertising alcohol at the airport, but you wouldn't necessarily want to advertise alcohol at the Jay Lively Recreation Center. And so there may be other types of restrictions. So that's why we separated the two. The reason why we're not talking about Jay Lively tonight is, in our conversations with Rebecca Sayers, our pros director, she was just not interested in taking this back up. She didn't feel like it was, the amount of money that came in was really worth the time of the program. It was a difficult program to run, so she didn't really see that benefit.
Thank you. I'll look forward to hearing Jay Lively. At least somebody should be able to tell us what the projected revenues would be from allowing advertising on those boards around the rink. I'm interested in following up on that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spence, if my memory serves me, Rebecca and Amy had shared a number. I think they were only bringing in about $8,000 annually on those boards, but I can definitely go back and try to find that figure.
$8,000 is not peanuts.
It's not peanuts, that's right.
And Rebecca's not here, so you know, I'm sure she can come and follow up. But I will say, it's a different type of program. Again, at the airport, mostly advertising was done on television, it's pretty simple. On those dasher boards, they get damaged. Staff would then have to replace them. You have to make sure they're not falling off when people are using the rink. It wasn't just the amount of revenue coming in, it was also the expense of time, of staff to manage it and to maintain it. But it sounds, I think, we were taking some notes over here, and we'll get you some better information from her in the future.
Thank you for that distinction.
Councilmember Garcia, and then Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So I had similar questions as Councilmember Matthews did, but they were answered. So when we look at direction, I mean, I would be okay with moving any program forward that makes sense and dollars at the same time. But I wonder if, but I'm hesitant here because what I'm hearing in the room is that it may not make more money, but it might cause more work. And if that's the case, then I'm not on board. So how do I figure out if this is going to be a wash in the end, if it's just going to take up staff's time? Or did I miss something inside of the packet?
Heidi's working, but I think from Heidi's perspective, she is recommending that we move, I think her recommendation would to move forward with reopening the program. So at least in her eyes, it's a benefit to have this program, even though it will take a little work to get it started back up again.
Okay. If that's the recommendation from staff, I'm willing to go down that road again, as long as we have enough safeguards and precautions to not have what happened prior that ended this program happen again.
Go ahead, Aslan.
Thank you. Well, we never have any guarantee of that, I'm afraid. Maybe to help you out a little bit with your deliberations, Councilmember Garcia, I would say my direction would be, let's move forward with this. A little backing up just a second. I appreciate that you guys revisit this and relook at it. It's always a healthy thing to do to sort of look at the changing context and how the landscape has evolved since council last made a decision. It's been a couple of years. This is an appropriate timeframe to sort of re-ask the question. I think that's completely appropriate. And you know, that was a weird situation a couple of years ago, and it was very difficult. And it makes you realize how entangled First Amendment concerns are in this country and just how quickly this can get very, very sticky. So getting back to the point, I do think we should move forward with this. The airport does have an enterprise fund. I think we should generally be in the habit of trying to exercise those muscles and trying to have the airport pay for itself. This is one of the things we can do, again, that helps the airport pay for itself. It shouldn't be a tool that's just stuffed in our drawer and forgotten about because of an incident several years ago. It's definitely something we should revisit. It's definitely something we should pull out and polish, to the extent that we're building towards a completely self-sustaining airport complex out there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Anyone online? So Kevin, I have a quick question. I'm wondering what the process is, if someone is denied, is there like a review process? I know that the last time it came to council, but what happens before then?
Yeah, I think Heidi and I actually had a conversation last week or the week before about that. And I think that is something we will definitely work on, that internal process, so that if a proposed advertisement comes in and staff at the airport have concerns that it may not be in line with the policy, they will loop Heidi in, they will loop myself in, they will loop the city manager's office in, and we'll have a discussion about it and see if it does conflict with the policy. And then I can imagine us having a conversation about whether to come back to council and say, does council want to allow this type of advertising in the airport, and do we want to amend our policy? So yeah, we've talked about beefing up that part of the conversation to ensure it's fully vetted internally as well, potentially with council.
Is that something that you can add in the final policy when you bring it back? Thank you. And I have a comment from Councilmember House.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to voice that I'm also supportive of bringing this back forward and look forward to seeing what the overall proposal is from the staff. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. Do you feel that you have direction?
I think so. I think I have, do I have four? Okay. I think we're good then. Yeah, thank you very much. We'll come back.
Thank you. Moving down to open call to the public, and I am not seeing anything. So informational items to and from mayor, council, and city manager with future agenda item requests. And I will start with Councilmember Matthews.
Caught me off guard, I was sleeping there a minute. Yesterday, we had the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration at the Elks Lodge. It was an amazing event, well-attended, best one yet. I just enjoy every year seeing it grow and develop and good attendance and just a good program, all in all. So thank you to Rose and all the commissioners who participated in that. And then, what I was trying to look up, because I forgot what it's called, but next week, we have a full activity with Unheard Voices, is that what it's called? Which looks like we might miss some of it because we have council responsibilities, but I'm encouraging the community to go watch the movies and listen to some of the lived experiences, talks, I think is going to be very informative and educational. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. This coming up week, I would like to invite the community to the Market of Dreams on Thursday, October 16th at 5:00 p.m. for a discussion about Flock. There, you'll be able to discuss the ALPR technology. I think that there might be representatives from Flock there to also have a conversation. But more importantly, the reason I am mentioning this to the community is I plan to be there. And here is your time to speak to the greater topic of what do you want to see from this technology moving forward, whether you like it, whether you don't. This is a great opportunity to get in touch with, you know, your local leadership in Flagstaff and have your voice be heard, while also learning from the Flag PD and Flock themselves and being able to ask them the important questions that you have burning in your mind. Beyond that, I wanted to mention that this is the last weekend for our local Saturday market. I can't remember who puts it on, but I know Meg Kabody is the leader of that. And so it's this Saturday from, I think, 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Come out and support your local community market. And I wanted to highlight an event that I attended on Sunday, which was a coat drive put on by the Kings of Mayhem Motorcycle Club. That is a local motorcycle club out of this area. And I often laugh when I hear their name because all I see them do is philanthropy, so I think it should be the Kings of Philanthropy. But much like our, you know, local roller derby crowd, they often have ominous names in there, I think in gist, but they donated what would have filled up about half of this area, full of coats, hats, jackets, gloves, and also socks that were brought by over 100 different motorcycle enthusiasts from all over northern Arizona. And there were several clubs under one roof enjoying camaraderie, fellowship, and donating to a higher cause that will help our homeless here. It's folks that you don't normally see representing their charity in rooms like this. So I thought it was important to highlight that there are so many people in this community that are willing to give a handout and a hand up to those who need it. And in the future, if you see events like this happening, I would encourage the public to come. And I think you'd be surprised of how, I was surprised how different it was than what I expected. And that's it for me for today. Thanks.
Well, I'm glad they were under a roof on Saturday. I don't have anything, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Daggett?
Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Spence?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I also did attend the Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was a lovely gathering, and I just appreciate staff and all the hard work with the community. Tomorrow, I will be attending the first responder luncheon. And Saturday, I know Nicole mentioned it, but I will be going down and speaking, honoring our Sustainability Division, winning the 2025 Best of Arizona through Green Living Magazine. And I'm excited, not only for that, I mean, that's a huge accomplishment, but I'm staying at the cul-de-sac community in a hotel. And I don't know if you've read about the cul-de-sac community, but they are saying that they are the first truly walkable neighborhood built from scratch in the United States. So I'm very curious to see what this will look like. I will report back next week. And Councilmember House, did you just put a C up? Oh, no, that's all. Okay. City Manager?
Nothing from us, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and this meeting is adjourned.